I had my phone.
You had your phone.
Order Tuesday, August 1st, please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, Claire, we'll do a roll call.
Okay, Richardson.
Here.
Wasom.
Present.
Ferguson.
Here.
Leonard.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Edley.
Here.
Walters.
Present.
All right. Next on the agenda is review for conflict of interest. Anyone on the board have anything to discuss or move forward? Hearing none, move on to item 4B, approval of the agenda.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can we add the special meeting on to the site plan review meetings from the June 6th? We used to have those as a separate one instead of just regular meeting?
We've been combining the site visit with the regular meeting minutes for each month.
Okay, so we don't need a separate motion. Okay.
So you're making a motion?
We're making a motion for the agenda.
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda of August 1st, 2023 of the Planning Commission.
Approve, I mean, support.
All right, we have a motion by Mindy, second by Renee, for approval of the agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. All right, now on to the meeting minutes of June 6th and July 5th.
I move to accept the East Bay Planning Commission's site review minutes and the planning committee, regular planning commission minutes of June 6, 2023.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Paul and support by Mindy for approval of the June 6th meeting minutes. Did that include the June, July 5th, or would you like that separately?
Oh, I thought we'd do separate.
Okay, that's fine. We can do that.
If you want, I'll amend that to include also the July 5th, 2023 minutes of the Planning Commission.
Mindy, would you support that?
I will.
Okay. All those in favor of approval of the meeting minutes of both June 6th, the special meeting on June 6th, as well as a regular meeting on July 5th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Public comment, maybe some light public comment this evening, but we got an opportunity nonetheless. Now's the time to approach lectern if you'd like to. And we don't have anybody on the horn. Okay, we'll close the public comment. Number seven is correspondence. I see we've got a few items. Claire, you want to talk through those?
Yeah, there was one, the letter is from the Arbutus Lake Association. It was addressed to myself and Beth, but I just wanted to share with the Planning Commission because it's related to site, previous site plan review with Lake Moore and, you know, recommendations for action. And so it's related to Planning Commission, so I wanted to share that with you, as well as there was correspondence from Matt Vermetten, who is the legal counsel for Sarah Beatty, who has been engaged through the daycare effort.
See more informative than anything, right? Any questions, Claire? Okay, moving on to item number eight, reports. Mindy with the township board.
So last month was a quarterly update, so each quarter we talked to each of our, we talked to the accountant, and we talked to the engineer, and we talked to the county commissioner about what's going on. But we also had our audit last meeting, so the audit of all 2022, and we got the gold star, if you will, for the audit last year. So our team in the office did an excellent job getting everything in the right spots and make sure that if the money needed to be moved, it got moved in the right timing. The short-term rental ordinance was approved. The changes that you might recall are distance between short-term rentals, the amount of short-term rentals, as well as the nights that were allowed for your rental. And it went from the four nights to the seven nights. And if you might recall, when it came out of Planning Commission the first time, it said seven nights. So I just want to say, good job the first time.
How did it get changed?
Township Board.
Seven-night minimum, or seven nights between stays?
It's seven-night minimum between, from the start of one to the start of another, there has to be seven nights in between. That person doesn't have to stay that time. It's just that it can't turn over to a new person, group. Also, we got two, 2% awards from the Grand Traverse Band of Chippewa and Ottawa Indians. One being infusion pumps for the ambulance, and the second one, are you talking about the second one, Mitchell Creek watershed restoration plan. We got a grant in concert with the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy for $12,781.
Awesome.
That's all I have.
Okay. Paul, on to ZBA.
Easy, no meeting.
It is easy. Claire, planning and zoning.
So the, the short-term rental ordinance officially went into effect yesterday, so we've got it noticed. Our big kind of undertaking is just figuring out all the licensing and our new timeline is all licenses will renew November 1st of each year. And so we're kind of just transitioning to that. We've got some new noticing requirements and new, some new changes to the application process, but I, I'm thinking it's going to run pretty smoothly. And Sam Lusus, our fellow, has been super helpful with that, so we're in the process of rolling that out. Did want to welcome Bill Vanderkook, our new zoning administrator. I know he's met a few of you, but he started last week, Monday, and it's been awesome to have him here. He's taken the lead on all of our enforcements, all of our land use permits, and just really anything that I don't want to work on, I just.
Ooh, she just admitted that, huh?
So, but Bill was previously with the city of Flint as the zoning coordinator, so he's already got his zoning administrator certifications, got a lot of experience in land development and conservation and zoning, so really, I think, going to be a really good fit for the township.
Welcome.
Welcome.
So, the three-mile trail, we've got a public open house, August 22nd, so we're going to be sending out postcards and press release and stuff, but we would love to have you all join for that. It's going to be evening, exact time to be determined, and we'll send that out, but that's going to be August 22nd, I believe is a Tuesday evening.
Where's it going to be?
It's going to be at the new, the land conservancy, the new building, so yeah. It'll be a great venue, and it'll be right in the middle of where the trail's going through, so it'll be a nice setting for that. We're also going to be reviewing the, the plans for the three-mile, or sorry, the Safe Routes to School trail, so we're really trying to roll those out in, you know, because they are a connected trail system, so kind of rolling those out as one trail system. MSU Extension, I think you probably received an announcement, but it's exciting because the Citizen Planner Course, which is pretty comprehensive, has a lot of resources and information for planning commissioners, as well as, you know, ZBA and other local officials. That's going to be here at East Bay Township. So we're opening it up to the entire region, but it's here at the Township Hall, so if anyone's interested in attending that, it starts in October, early October. It's once a week for six weeks, and the township can cover the cost of your enrollment, so just let me know if you'd like to be, if you'd like to enroll in that. And then last piece of information, which is maybe not great news, but we're looking at two meetings in September. We've got a ton of applications that have come in, so we have, we have, we're going to have four item, four pretty big items on the agenda for our September 5th meeting, and then I'm rolling two additional public hearings over to September 19th. So that's that third Tuesday that we generally hold for special meetings. And so just wanted to let you know, we're planning to hold two public hearings on that September 19th date. I got in touch with two of the applicants, the last two that applied, and so they're available to, to attend for the September 19th date. So that's all, thank you.
That's it.
Quick question, going back to the SDRs. So is everybody that currently has a licensed grandfathered in, and so eventually if any fall off, we'll get down, how far over the number are we?
So we are at, we were at 181. There was a number, there was one owner that had a number of short-term rentals that sold his properties, and so they didn't renew. So I think we lost maybe seven or eight through that, but the cap is 145, which will get reviewed and discussed on an annual basis, but we're pretty, you know, significantly below what, or above what the cap is right now. So we will be noticing available license on an annual basis, but probably going to be a few years before we go through that process.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, yeah?
With regards to short-term rentals, those ones that were in the process for it had expired, and then the moratorium, have those all come in? That's a done deal, right?
Yep. Their time has run out now, so.
Did all make it?
Not all of them, but a large chunk did, yeah. I think anyone who was interested did.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on to new business for the Planning Commission, we've got our first item, which is zoning amendment 2-23, childcare standards, and this is actually a public hearing. Before we have the very vigorous public comment that we're going to get this evening, I'd like to kick it off with Claire and maybe anybody else who is on the horn, who might be here to speak on behalf of us.
Okay, yeah, so we have Abby Howley is here with Olson Bezdox, but I did just want to kick it off. I know that we've been reviewing this for a couple of months now. I did receive a call from Sarah Beatty. She's no longer moving forward with the, with the daycare center. There was some other licensing, state licensing issues, and so that's, that's something that she's no longer pursuing. That being said, I think that the, the ordinance requirements are, I think it was a really good process, so I, I am excited about expanding the districts that daycare centers are permitted in, group daycare facilities. So I think that, I'm glad that we took a holistic look at childcare and preschool and daycare throughout the township, and so I, I think that it was a good process, and I'm excited to move forward and hopefully through this, this proposed amendment, be able to offer some additional daycare opportunities throughout all districts in the township.
And we have with us an online guest.
Yep, and Abby, yeah, if you want to go ahead before the public hearing, just provide an update.
Sure. Thank you for having me. I typed up a little public, or comment that kind of addresses the public, which may be less necessary than I thought it would be. So I'm just going to skim that on the fly and kind of give an overview of how our firm got involved, and the proposed amendment language that we drafted as a refresher for everybody there. And I, I can't see the audience, so there could be members of the public who aren't aware of the details and would benefit from a rundown. So our firm was hired to assist in drafting zoning ordinance language, contemplating this idea of allowing childcare centers in the industrial districts or zones of the township. We contemplated several different approaches based on comments and concerns of the planning commissioners, and developed a legal framework that we believe best address those concerns while relying upon state regulatory framework already in place. You know, we understand that the township board and planning commissioners come with vast different experience and expertise, but in large part, oftentimes they're made up of members that aren't familiar with environmental regulation. So we felt that this approach would provide the township with flexibility to address concerns in the future, but also would allow the average person that doesn't work in this area to rely on standards already set by experts and relied upon by our state. So I don't think I need to run through all of what I had prepared, but I'll just remind you that the language that we drafted includes a blanket prohibition on childcare centers in the industrial district at any location that is considered a facility, and that's as defined by the Michigan Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. So the state statute has a very particular definition of what a facility is, and it's really just a place or a property where the state, as they have identified different hazardous substances, a place where those are located, and they're above a level that the state deems safe under certain cleanup standards. And the cleanup standards that we're looking at are cleanup standards for residential properties, just kind of the highest level that the state considers. So under this framework, those locations would be automatically off the table unless the applicant wanted to take the steps to make that parcel no longer considered a facility, which would mean either removing, or reducing, or treating the contamination on that property until the levels of hazardous substance either weren't present or are so low that the state would acknowledge that it meets the unrestricted residential cleanup standards, and no longer would be a facility. So under this approach, the Planning Commission in the township would have the ability to ask an applicant, and it could be, you know, every application that you receive, or just if you have specific concerns, to undertake environmental due diligence to ensure that the location wouldn't qualify as a facility under those state standards. The language is broad, so the planning commissioners wouldn't have to dream up what those specific tests would be. The burden would be on the applicant to go out and get testing done and have an expert say, there are no hazardous substances on this property. With all that in mind, you know, we thought long and hard about how the township could tackle this problem, and this is probably the best framework for the Planning Commission to use, just, you know, relying on those state standards, not trying to develop their own and identify what substances would be tested for and what they would overlook and what standards. And the beauty of this is, as the state law changes, if there are new substances that are identified as hazardous, or the state changes what it considers to be safe levels, the way the zoning ordinance is drafted, that would just automatically be wrapped into the township zoning ordinance, so you wouldn't have to go back and reevaluate, okay, do we need to set new standards, or do we need to rethink what is on our list of hazardous substances? That would just mirror what the state has in place as the state makes changes.
Abby, I have a question for you.
Sure.
This is Mindy. Last week, Governor Whitmer signed a law reversing the law that was in place since 2018, that said that the state could not, could not make a criteria more restrictive than the federal government. So now the state can make criteria more stricter than the federal government. So my question is this, if you have a facility, if you don't have a facility and you establish a daycare center, and the state changes what the facility condition level is, how's that work?
So you're saying that if you went ahead and approved a location under the current standards, and then the standards were changed in the future?
Made lower.
And lowered. I mean, that's a great question. That's something that you deal with in planning and zoning all the time. As, as time changes, what we think is a good idea, and something that's in place in regulations that we follow, over time, we decide, well, maybe we don't want setbacks this far on our lots, or maybe our lot sizes can be smaller because we're having a housing shortage. And that's how you end up with legal non-conforming uses. The idea would be that if that use ever changed, and it was no longer a childcare facility, something else ended up in that location, you couldn't go back and automatically get permitted again. You know, you'd have to abide by those new standards. But, you know, I think, again, it's kind of like any zoning ordinance question, we can't predict the future. All you can do is, is look at what information you have currently, and try to make the best decision, or the decision that you think is appropriate for the township right now.
Are there any general questions on these work, this, this ordinance in front of us, we just, okay. I got a question on, we have a section 615 deals with the daycare group facilities from seven to 12 children, basically a private home, and then section 616 is other than a private residence. But in, in, in section 615, there are a number of items where the facility shall be located 1,500 feet from any one of the following, and it lists a number of different items that you have to be away from. However, in 616, that section is not in there.
I, I can speak to that, Paul.
Okay, please.
That's a great question, and I would say the, the daycare centers and group home provisions are going to be carefully looked at as a part of the full zoning ordinance rewrite. And so if you'll recall, the, originally I had recommended, you know, only making some adjustments to the districts permitted, but not changing the specific standards. As the Planning Commission started to work through the, you know, discussion of industrial properties with daycare centers, there, you know, there was direction to staff that you wanted specific standards related to industrial properties. And so that's what Olson Bezdox assisted us with, looking only at, you know, industrial standards to, to add that added protection. I can tell you that moving forward, we are going to, with the zoning ordinance subcommittee, be taking a look at, at changing the, not substantially changing, but amending these specific standards. We just weren't looking at opening this entire can of worms to overhaul all the standards at this time.
Okay, so we, we get a second bite of the apple.
Where to come.
Yep, exactly.
What was that?
Because I wanted to do some more research on state preemption, and because there are some standards in our ordinance right now, that I believe the state preempts through licensing requirements. So for example, we don't specifically say that six or less children are considered a single-family home, that's state law. So there's, there's a number of items that I wanted to research in more depth related to state licensing for these facilities.
Then, then the other is just as a, as a, an aside, we have, in section 303, where we have the matrix of permitted or special land use permits, and it goes all the way across. The only question is, in the Lakes area, why are we now thinking of permitting it there? Because Lakes area doesn't allow any type of assembly areas. There is a provision in the Lakes area for small businesses, but that's about it. So then all of a sudden, we're opening up the Lakes area to this type of facility. I just wonder whether or not that's a slippery slope.
Right, so that, I mean, that's a policy decision. The, the recommendation would basically be to allow all residences or, or, yeah, dwelling units, the opportunity to come and apply for a special land use permit to allow seven to 12 children in a residential facility. So that, that's a policy decision. I spoke in detail with the Grand Traverse County Environmental Health Department before last month's meeting, just to better understand what their licensing process is. So when they receive a application through the state for licensing, the county goes and takes a look at the septic system, make sure that it's sized appropriately for the number of children that they are licensing, and then there's an annual inspection on the septic system. So that was some of the information that I gathered, but it's ultimately a policy decision for the Planning Commission on whether or not you're comfortable with facilities.
In that circumstance, is it annual?
Yes.
Interesting.
Any other questions for Abby, or Claire?
Yes. With regards to the question that Paul just asked, section 615 is for daycares, group daycares, and we don't, in the table of 303, I don't see that in the industrial, so do we need to include section K in that section? I said section three times, did you follow me?
So the, the proposal is to only allow like a, a center or a facility in the industrial, not a, not a daycare.
But we included the industrial language in the section for the daycare or the group. So I think that should come out of K because it's not allowed in industrial, because of 303.
Yeah, that's it. Yes, you're, that's correct.
Say that one more time, Mindy, for me, will you, please?
Yeah, I'm.
Section 615 is for the daycares, group facilities accommodating seven to 12 students, students, children.
Yep.
Okay, if you go back to section 303 use table, we're not adding them in the industrial district. However, the language with what you do in the industrial district is still included in section 615, and since it's not allowed, or we're not, it's not in the table, it shouldn't be in the language either.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question, thank you.
Good point.
So we basically omit letter K?
Yes, I believe so.
Does anybody else see that?
Under 615.
I have a question too. So last month, we had the whole conversation about the word facility. So last month, we had the whole conversation about the word "facility," and yet, we're still using "facility" under education facilities, daycare facilities, and yet, the term "facility," hazardous substance, and unre, I just, I feel like, are we still, I thought we were gonna, I don't know.
Yeah, Abby, do you want to speak to that? Because I know you went back and amended the language to clarify.
Sure. So rather than trying to, to tackle your whole zoning ordinance and change every time facility is listed somewhere, these sub-paragraphs, so, under 616, it's sub-paragraph J, and under 616, it is paragraph I. So it says under the, the third sub-sub-paragraph, under the sub-paragraph I, the term "facility" is defined by the statute. So it, you know, limits, when, when you're talking about facility under those sub-paragraphs J and I, they have a very particular definition. So it kind of clarifies, you know, "facility" might be used elsewhere, but in this section, this is what it means. Otherwise, I think Claire would have to spend a while trying to go back through the zoning ordinance and highlight and change every time facility is used, whether it's in regards to childcare centers or any other use.
Right. That makes sense. I just remembered having quite a conversation about it, so I wondered, okay, so that makes sense.
Sure. It was a very good catch, though. Thank you for bringing it up.
Just wanted to know, what we're looking at now, is it not K and J?
It depends. In the, under 615, it was K. Under 616?
It's J, right?
It's J.
J.
But we are deleting K.
We remove K.
Exactly.
Right, deleting K.
In 615?
I get that, 615.
Right.
Yeah, right, right.
J, J.
I have just an administrative question, Claire. Since we're not currently faced with, like, the immediacy of somebody potentially adding 35 daycare spots to our township with the withdrawal of the application, is there a reason this shouldn't just occur under the rewrite of the zoning ordinance?
That would, that would be, yeah, that would be a possibility.
I, I'm supportive of this, and if another application came in prior to our zoning ordinance being rewritten and amended, I would still be in favor of trying to get them in, because I think it's, it's a need. But without that, I'm just wondering, you, you had mentioned maybe you want to do some more research, so.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I'm just throwing it out there, I guess, to you.
Yeah, that, that's one option. I guess the one, the one concern I would have is if there was an application that comes in, say someone wants to open a group home, you know, group in, in-home care for seven to 12 kids in a district where it's not currently allowed, slows them down a couple months to go through Planning Commission, public hearing, go to Township Board, and then have them submit their special land use permit application. So it takes a one-to-two-month process and makes it more of, like, a four-month process.
And those would be by right if they were in the residential districts, then?
They would be generally by special land use permit if it was a group home.
Oh, right, that's right, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, a daycare center, yeah, a daycare center we're, are recommending in the commercial districts to allow those permitted by right.
Okay, no, I, that makes sense to me, then, I, then. I'm okay addressing it now.
Okay.
Yeah, and if, if the, if the Planning Commission decides you want to tweak the language before next month, that would be fine. I mean, that would be another option, just because then it, it would be something that we could take care of with the, you know, possibility of having an applicant come in. I would say realistically, we're looking at almost, probably less than a year, but pretty close to a year before the full ordinance will be in place.
Oh, yeah, we don't want to do that.
I don't want to waste that long, then.
Yeah.
No, I know that other building that's in question is still for sale, too, so, you know.
So is the applicant, and this may be irrelevant, but is she not pursuing a daycare at all? Or did it have to do with this location at the state?
Yeah, that would be a great question for her. I think she's still interested in a daycare. So whether it's in East Bay or another location.
Right.
But.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Abby. We may still have questions, because we have a massive crowd here. I don't want to eat you off too quickly. But with that, we'll open the public hearing at 7:06, and pending one person in the audience, we may or may not have any public comment.
No.
You good? Okay. We'll close the public hearing, then, at 7:07 and bring it back to the Commission. So it sounds like we've got kind of, I feel pretty good about where everybody's at in terms of talking through it. Any other last-minute questions or changes? It sounds like omission of letter K is pretty much the consensus with everyone, but any other changes, or?
I still object to having the, the group, or the daycare center in industrial district. I will point the Planning Commission to section 415, which is of the zoning ordinance, the industrial district. The intent of the ordinance is to make available a wide range of suitable sites for all types of manufacturing and related activities to protect residents by separating them from manufacturing activities and by prohibiting the use of the space for new residential, and it continues. But one of the things that I also, you know, I've, I've stated in the past that we have limited industrial space in the township, and we also have some stuff that is used by right that may or may not be jeopardized by the use of a, a daycare center, and that would be medical marijuana primary caregiver facilities and the distillery that we have already, you know, because both of those are considered drugs. And although I read the safe routes, or not safe routes to school, but the drugs in the school zone not to include childcare centers, I, I think that that's a slippery idea. So again, there's some stuff that is a use by right in this district that may not, in my opinion, in 107, be in the right spot for a childcare center. The other districts I'm fine with. This is the only one that I have concerns regarding. And my also, my question, again, to Abby is, or that I asked earlier to Abby with regards to the change in the law and the potential for criteria to actually being, going down in the state, and, you know, the Michigan Environmental Protection Act, Act 451, is protection of human health in the environment. That's the whole goal. And so if they're changing criteria down, and we've got a sensitive population in this environment, and we have already approved a daycare center in this environment, you know, I, I just, again, it's the changing, it's the hazardous substances that may or may not be listed right now. You know, we are adjacent to the airport. We do know that there's PFAS contamination at the airport. Was this investigated in this area? I don't know. Again, PFAS was, had a lot to do with the firefighting foam, but it's an emerging chemical, and we don't know much about it at this time. So those are the things that I, I've said my piece now.
Thank you for the context, though. It's helpful. Anybody else want to comment on the whole thing, pieces of it?
In regards to the industrial district, I just think, given, the city already allows it, which is right across the street from our residential area, that allows these types of centers. There's schools that are located right next to other industrial districts that is the distillery, so I don't think we're really, I guess, making things worse, in my opinion. I, I think, given the layout of our districts and people going to work, school, stuff like that, I think it's beneficial. That's my opinion, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would agree with Stephen. I, I certainly recognize Mindy's concerns, and I, and I think, I both recognize and I, I, I understand that there are concerns. I think, to me, again, this is my opinion, one of seven, that the need is, is, is more dire than, than the potential for exposure, and that there is also, we don't know where these exposures go. Ground plumes move, they go under residences, they go past the industrial district. And I, I think, again, this is basically a personal approach, too. I think there's, there's a requirement of due diligence on the part of people who want to cite a daycare, and there's also a requirement on the part of parents who, who want to put their children in a daycare, and I think they're capable of evaluating that. And there's also licensing requirements with the state for the daycare facilities. And so for, to me, those things and the need for daycare outweigh the potential risk, which I acknowledge, of one being in an industrial zone.
I think if, as you remember from the last meeting, I was kind of on the fence. I see both sides of this. Question about the applicant, and that has been withdrawn. We may not know the answer, but it was a licensing issue. Was that a state licensing issue? And was it related to the fact that it was in an industrial? No, do we know?
No, I believe it was related to ingress and egress to the building, but Stephen probably knows more than that.
I can actually answer this. She, we built the original building, and she came to us for original plans, and I modified those plans to open up some walls. And they were also under a purchase agreement by date that they had already extended, and then the licensing with the state was going to take a minimum of four more months from this month. So it just, the money, it just, she was still very interested in just that facility, that location, and the state licensing, and just the risk wasn't worth it for her. She interested, but that's, you know, where she goes from there, that's on her.
Okay.
So that's, that's the answer, and I, you know, that came in this afternoon.
Okay. Hot off the press, okay.
Well, she's certainly getting schooled on how this works, because, I mean.
Right.
She was upset that we extended for a month, which I understood, you know, because of her contract, but now the state's saying four more months? It's like, oh, my word.
And I sympathize with it. My mom tried to do a daycare when I was in middle school, high school, and that was just for six kids, and it was at home, and it's, it was a pain. So going after something that big?
Yep.
We limited our involvement because we weren't going to be doing the project. She just needed drawings from us and send it to the state, and it was going to be pretty extensive, so.
Thank you.
And I will say that, you know, she did submit an application for special land use permit. It hasn't been formally withdrawn yet.
Okay.
So it's, that was just the communications I received.
Okay.
I have to go with Mindy. I, I can see, I understand that the need, there is no doubt the need, and it looks to me that what we are doing here, we are opening up other areas of possibility for folks. It just also seems that because we are limited in the industrial area, having a daycare center there could, in fact, nullify other businesses that could be coming in there because now we have the daycare center, which is preventing other things from coming in. And we have an industrial area for a reason, and I realize that in the past, we may have locations next to the industrial center now, but I can't rectify the past. I can only look down to the future. And as I said, I'm, I'm conflicted on this thing, but I have to go with the fact that it just doesn't seem okay to me to be putting a daycare center, or at least the potential of a daycare center, in an area that just has not been created for such a thing.
Renee, you and me are the only ones that haven't said anything more.
That's because anything I say is going to be exactly what I said last month, so I haven't changed my stance on it. I really appreciate Mindy's, I mean, expertise, I do, I really do. But I get really hung up on the fact that our industrial is located right in between a school and residential. So it's like, I just, I don't know. I get, that's where I get hung up, and so I haven't really changed my stance. I guess what I'm gonna ask is, we already voted on this last month. Are we voting simply, I mean, is this something we're voting on tonight to change the zoning?
So last month, you voted to schedule a public hearing, so you weren't necessarily voting to support the change. You wanted, you wanted to hear the public.
Okay, gotcha.
Public input. And then this, so this vote would be to recommend to the Township Board?
Gotcha.
The, the text amendment, and so it would have to be approved by the Township Board before it was in effect.
All right, thank you.
But good, good question, and I could have clarified that before.
Well, I was just, needed clarification. It's been a month.
Been a minute.
So, it's been a minute.
And with my, with my stance, I think it's just tied more to the need, but also in the fact that I've seen this become a practice elsewhere in the, in the manufacturing sectors, where they are literally creating daycares as a piece of recruitment for talent in the actual facility, around it, next door to it, what have you. Again, I'm not saying that it's the right thing, but for places that have manufacturing, that's a dramatic barrier for attracting new talent to fill those new jobs. And if we allow it, I think we'd be in the more creative atmosphere in terms of, from an attraction standpoint, to fill some of those industrial parks, because that park has available land in it yet, and it has open buildings in it yet. And I don't think that they're creating daycares quick enough to keep up with the demand that's on the table today, let alone future demand. So I'm, I'm into opening it up and kind of letting the market run it here, because I just, yeah, I'm battling it personally, and I know that there are many other families who aren't as established as we are, who are doing the same. But that being said, we are not the final vote, again, just for those in the audience. There is another body that will think about this and review it, and we'll see where the tea leaves fall, but with that, we, we do need a motion to move one way or the other.
Well, I, I have a question on the motion. Is this motion that for adoption of section 303 in its entirety, which then has, is backed up by the individual sections 615, 616, or can we amend, or make a motion to accept 303 without permitting daycare centers in, in the industrial area?
Yep. Paul, I can, I can clarify just the, the administrative process of that. You could make a motion to recommend zoning amendment 2-23 to the Township Board for approval with the following changes. And so if you're removing something that was already, you know, for public hearing, if you're, if you're taking, if, if you're making it more restrictive, so, you know, removing the, the allowance from the industrial district, or taking out, you know, that provision related to the industrial district, that would be fine. We wouldn't need to renotice for public hearing. If you were adding in additional uses, then that would be something we would need to renotice for a public hearing.
Okay. So then I'm making the motion to accept zoning amendment 2-23, as stated, with the exception of the permitted uses in the industrial, industrial area.
And did you also want to omit K under 615, since it was, that was the point that Mindy had made it?
Oh, well, then, yeah, and that would be eliminating K anyway for the, that's a correction, actually.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So if this, the way they just made the motion, does not get supported or pass, can a new motion be made?
Yes.
Okay, just checking.
So we have a motion by Paul, seconded by Mindy. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Claire?
Sure. Richard? Richardson.
No.
Wasson.
Approve.
Approve, sorry. Ferguson.
No.
Leonard.
No.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Edley.
No.
Walters.
Yes.
Those three to four.
Okay, so the motion fails.
Failed, yep.
Okay. So that being the case, we would need another motion.
I make a motion to approve amendment 2-23 with the removal of K in the Section 615.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion. I see them supported by Renee. Can we have another roll call vote, please?
Richardson.
Yes.
Wasson.
No.
Ferguson.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
No.
Edley.
Yes.
Walters.
No.
Okay, motion carries four to three. This will go to the next Township Board meeting, which is when?
We will, we'll wait until the minutes are approved, and so we'll take it in September.
Okay. Good clarity, for those that are interested on TV land. This will come back to the Township Board in September. Thank you for the dialogue, everyone. This is our, yeah, it's good to get through it all and weigh all the different angles, and I appreciate that about everybody here.
Sure, I hate to bring this up, but I just wanted to, previously, when I voted against something, since I am the Township Board representative, usually a planning commissioner that's for it shows up at the Township Board meeting. I just want to remind.
Sure thing.
Thank you. That's a good reminder.
Yep. As long as I get a reminder, I'd be happy to go to that.
We need lots of reminders.
Okay.
When is that going to be? September what?
That would be September 11th, I think.
Yes, the following Monday, right?
The second Monday, so September 11th.
Okay. So moving on to our last piece of business, which I think is going to be pretty short, is site plan review 6-23 ROW investments. If you want to just give us like administratively where we're at, what we're going to be doing.
Yeah, so they, they have, as of last night, late in the day yesterday, submitted everything, so it's, it's ready to be reviewed and approved at the September meeting. Unfortunately, we just didn't receive it until late yesterday, and just wanted to make sure Planning Commission had the opportunity to review. They provided an updated site plan, and the metro fire review was favorable. They received the ROW Commission permit, so there's a few items that I'm still looking for related to just some landscaping, but for the most part, it's ready to go, and so it'll be on the September 5th agenda.
Did Wade Trim finish the stormwater?
They are satisfied with the submittal, so it's a, it's a, it's a submittal that they can approve, and hopefully that they have issued a permit by then as well.
Got it.
Good question.
Okay, do we need to do any type of delay, if you will officially, or we'll just consider it at our September meeting?
Yeah, you could make a motion to postpone until September.
Okay.
Make a motion to postpone site plan review 6-23 ROW investments until the September meeting.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Mindy, seconded by Paul, for, for considering this at a later date. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and on to public comment number two, last chance. Okay. I feel like we're being very generous here. And consideration of future agenda items, do we have anything else we need to bring up, just generally, policy-wise? Anything that's in front of anybody right now? That's a new one that I haven't noticed on the agenda.
Yeah, I spoke to that last month, but I just, because oftentimes, there's public comment, but with recommendations for items for the Planning Commission to take up, and it's not appropriate to engage in discussion during public comment, I wanted an opportunity for the plan, for a planning commissioner to say, hey, staff, could you explore in more detail this text amendment, or, you know, this, this item? So it gives the Planning Commission an opportunity to be looking more proactively long-term as opposed to some of the, the development reviews that you've been working on.
I like it.
I hope you noticed that.
You get a lot of debate out of this group, for good. Upcoming meeting days, Tuesday, September 5th, there's our next regular meeting, and.
And September 19th.
And September 19th. Thank you for the reminder, and I've got to be at that next September Township Board meeting, so. And zoning ordinance subcommittee, August 9th and August 30th at 8:30 a.m.
And Trails meeting.
22nd.
August 22nd.
August 22nd.
Thank you.
For the ribbon cutting?
I wish.
Oh.
It's, what is it, just?
It's a, it's a 50% complete engineering review. Design engineering, yeah. Halfway there. Carl's going to help us with that, though.
And this is at the building on the, at the old golf, little Mitchell.
It's a beautiful building, so.
Yeah, it looks really nice. I'd like to see it.
There's just the trail.
I think, Carol, rerouted, it's not 13 million, is it?
I think we're down to around 9 million now, or 10 million.
That sounds pretty good from 13. She's saying $4 million.
And our, I don't know how many on one hand, meeting that's under an hour, is adjourned.
But I like it.